I'm Dan Miller from Potestin Associates. And I'm also a member of the Chamber of Commerce Government Affairs Committee.
I'm Libby Dur from FirstEnergy. And we are here interviewing candidates for the upcoming Morgantown City Council elections.
Prior to that, we surveyed the membership of the chamber to determine what's the most important issues in this area. And we're going to ask the most important questions to the city council candidates.
We encourage all of you to study the interviews to help you make the most important, the most informed decision that you can when you go out and vote.
So go to the Morgantown Chamber website and enjoy the show. We're here with Todd Stainbrook, and he's a candidate for the 7th Ward here in Morgantown in the upcoming elections. Welcome, Todd, and thanks for coming.
Thank you for having me.
We've got, the chamber has a few questions that were devised from the membership. And you were provided those in advance. And we'll just jump right into the first few questions and see what your opinion is on those.
Sure.
And as a Morgantown resident, you know that traffic is a real problem in Morgantown. And most folks feel that this must be addressed. Do you have any ideas how to help resolve some of the traffic problems in town? Is there much talk of additional roundabouts, which many people express they do not like? Are there any other solutions?
Well, I think the first thing the city has to do is actually address the problems. Stating that everything is okay and sweeping it under the rug does not solve any issues. Roundabouts are a wonderful tool if you're actually going from the equal amount of lanes to and from. If you do not do that, then of course, that's not something that is very positive. The infrastructure in Morgantown with the terrain that we have is a difficult thing to resolve. I think that listening to business owners and the public would probably be our best bet. Find out what they have to say, what their needs and wants are, especially the businesses. I understand, you know, the public is important as well, but the businesses are a main contributor. So find out what they feel is the best thing to do. Have them bring that to city council so it can be analyzed and work together. I think that's the most important thing.
Yeah, good. And you touched on the second question, which is infrastructure. Roads are part of it. So our second question is, what infrastructure improvements do you foresee as necessary to promote long-term growth?
Easier accessibility to downtown would be great. Utilizing what space in town that we do have that is not being utilized would be wonderful. Saberton is a prime example of that. Redoing the infrastructure in Saberton would help a lot. But we don't utilize that interstate the way that we should. We get a lot of local traffic from, the interstate is 79. 68, we could be getting a lot more traffic from other states that we're not benefiting from. Saberton is a big market that needs it. But as far as the infrastructure itself, I go back to the businesses. I mean, I just, I believe you have two ears and one mouth for a reason. And I don't think that we listen enough to the public or the businesses to find out what their needs and wants are. We can think anything we want. But if I don't drive that road every day, how am I supposed to know how bad that road is? So let's hear from people, and let's hear from those businesses, and try to do things in a productive way.
Good.
Thank you. Next, we're going to talk about future business stability within the north-central West Virginia competitive markets. The major concern of any business venture is reducing risk by attaining a degree of predictability in the area in which they choose to invest. So our first question related to this is, what is your working knowledge of the business and occupation general revenue collections? How do you propose to address the city's $92 million-plus unfunded pension obligation and the grant-funded city employees after the grant funds run dry?
The pension is a big deal. And if businesses are looking at the proposal of growth in Morgantown, unfortunately, our numbers aren't showing that that growth is actually happening. So for a business to look at the opportunity to come here, they are going to be a little more shaky than what they should be. You can't have the population moving out of Morgantown and expect a business to come in and think they're going to thrive. Businesses need to want to come here and see that that growth is a good possibility. And by businesses being here, of course, more tax revenue is brought in. That will definitely help the pension fund. Grant money will definitely help. You know, there are several ways to go about it to make sure that our firefighters or police, public works, they need taken care of. And to even have it a question mark at this point, that's a problem that I don't understand. And that's what I would like to find out a little more about. Why are we in this situation? What brought this about? Try to do some reversal and maybe fix it internally as well.
Very good. Thank you. Our next question is, what actions will you take to improve and preserve the ability for the businesses and firms to compete with entities outside the city? Do you support a 1% sales tax? Why or why not? Do you believe it will harm businesses in the city?
I was asked this last night with 14 other candidates, and I was the only one that said I do not believe in a 1% tax. I do not feel it's, should be put on the people's back by no means. And I go back to what happened. Why is there a need for a 1% tax? We need to do some soul-searching within the city. You know, is there a misappropriation of funds? Where did the money go? Why do we need this? We need this, from what I see as a citizen, because businesses are moving out of town. And if they continue to move out of town, you will not have a town. We have to put a stop to that. You know, businesses bring in revenue. And if you're not going to focus on that, then you're wasting your time. It will eventually erode. And that erosion needs to stop.
Todd, I forgot to ask you to give us a quick biography of your background.
I noticed that.
And so we'll give you that opportunity now before you leave. So we can give you about a one minute just to tell us your background and what motivated you to run for city council.
Sure. Married, two great kids, one 17, one four, two much older children, 27 and 29. I've been in the auto industry around town for 27 years. I do some buying for a dealership in Indianapolis, Indiana as well, so I stay pretty busy with that. A lot of awards and secondary financing as well as conventional financing. That's kind of where I specialize. I got into this, number one, because I was asked. And number two, I do see what's going on with the city. I feel it every day. I see it in the public every day. You know, when my sales are down and the people that come into our lot don't have the money they used to have, that is an issue for me. It's an issue for my pocketbook. It's an issue for them. So something has to be done. I think that we're, from what I am seeing, getting involved in this, because I'm not a political person, I've never done this before in my life. So I'm a citizen from the outside looking in, and it seems that everybody on the inside is very content where everything is. And I've heard it, I've seen it, and I'm still shaking my head trying to figure out how or why they feel that way. So regardless of what ends up happening with this election, I hope to at least stir up enough crud to shake somebody else's head. And maybe they'll question what it is that is going on. And it needs done.
Very good. Thank you for coming in to share your thoughts with us.
I still have one more question.
And we do. You want to give them the last question?
Hello. Again, yeah, we do have a wrap-up question. And this is really an opportunity for you to tell us anything that you want to related to your preference or what you plan to do. What are you going to do if you win office?
Well, my emphasis, I'd really like to see some things done with Pope Park. I've played hockey here for, how old am I, 40 years. I've seen the rink go from fence for Plexiglas to no walls, you know, to eventually getting to where we're at now. But Pope Park really needs a lot of help. WVU at one point in time was willing to help with that. I'm not sure why that went away. You know, they use that rink 30% of the time and not a lot of investment. So I'm still questioning that as well. But I really think we need to start negotiating with our partners a lot better than what we do. You know, you have to listen, but you also have to ask the questions. So if the questions are never asked, nothing is going to get done. WVU needs spoken to, the state needs spoken to, DOH needs spoken to. You know, these are musts if things are going to get done. And for some reason, the city council that we have now and the powers-to-be do not like to communicate. And I don't understand that. It's not a difficult thing to do. So let's do it.
Thank you. We appreciate you taking the time and coming in and letting everybody know your perspective and your stand on all of these issues.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity.
We're here with Barbara Parsons from the 2nd Ward in Morgantown. Thanks for coming, Barbara.
Thank you for inviting me.
We've got four questions for you. And prior to getting into those questions, we'd like you to take about a minute just to give us a little bit of background on your experience here in Morgantown.
Okay. I've been in Morgantown for almost 50 years. I live on Park Street. I've raised two daughters here in Morgantown and my county school system. I live in a 116-year-old house, which at this point in time requires a lot of love and attention. And with my late husband, Dieter, my daughters and I have embarked on a business plan for offering affordable housing. And we have focused on the Greenmont area and White Avenue. My work experience has been in private industry, in the public sector, in healthcare, and in consulting. I retired from 20 years in healthcare. I spent eight years in executive staff in healthcare administration. And I've spent a lot of time in governance, working in organizations for supporting healthcare, education, and teaching governance to all 55 school counties in the state and in my consulting practice. Locally, I've been involved in the United Way and in Morgantown Utility Board. I helped begin the whole process with the MPO. And so I feel I bring to, to the city council, a lot of governing experience.
Very good. Our first question for you is, traffic is a real problem in Morgantown, and most folks feel this must be addressed. Do you have any ideas how to help resolve some of the traffic issues in town? There's much talk of additional roundabouts, which many people express they do not like. Are there other solutions?
Well, I know we hear a lot about traffic, but I will tell you, I've been in California recently, and you'd hear even more about traffic. So interestingly enough, in looking into traffic and trying to understand it, and of course, working with the MPO, I have to say that we have to think positively in some ways, because high traffic is an indication of a good economy. Without traffic, you obviously don't have people traveling to work or going places, enjoying their environment. Already, we have, and this is something else to consider, the cheap and useful roads are in existence. So what we have is kind of what we have. Can we improve on it? We can tweak it. But without building additional roads, we really cannot make major improvements. And so it takes a lot of planning, a lot of looking at the area. It takes land use planning. It takes development planning. And so we need to either reduce the number of cars, which is one solution, or we need to increase the number of roads. And interestingly enough, since 1970 in the United States, the number of cars registered to drive on the highways has increased 90%. But the number of miles built into roadways has only increased 6%.
Geez.
So in many ways, it's a losing proposition. But when you have development, and you plan, and you know where that development's going to be, and you have in place the guidelines to help develop those areas, you can also plan around the transportation. For example, one of the concerns I have right now is the new parking garage that's going in by the hospital. That's going to mean a lot of cars because they're recruiting a lot of people. How is that going to impact the entry and exit, the wait times in that area, which is already congested?
Right.
And what plans do we have to address it? And who does that? I don't know. So as we develop and as we see these things, we're going to have a new B&amp;E building down on Beachhurst. What's going to happen to traffic there? Again, the hospitals, when we have developments in areas out from the city, it's a different proposition. But as these things occur within and contiguous to the city, we really need to be on top of that in advance of opening the building, having the cars come out.
Yeah, good. And a related question is, what infrastructure improvements do you foresee as necessary to promote long-term growth?
Infrastructure, okay. Infrastructure's a lot of things. I think first of all, about water, sewage, utilities, highways.
Yep.
And transportation. I think again, in West Virginia, we believe that planning is a four-letter word, P-L-A-N. And for some reason, as stubborn mountaineers, we feel that we should be able to do what we want to do, when we want to do it, and how we want to do it. But then, we don't want to complain when we don't plan, or we do a lot of complaining when we don't plan. And I think the key to infrastructure is knowing what you need, when are you going to need it, or at least some anticipation, which means a lot of communication and coordination. It means people just don't go out and do what they want and then call and say, "I need water. I need sewage. I need you to build a highway." But if you say, "We would like to put in a development," and I'll give you the examples of the business complexes, and especially the one right now between Westover and Ramble, you've got a piece of property, you develop it, you plan for the infrastructure. Now, that makes it much easier than to have to catch up, to have to dig up, to have to repair, to have to replace, and to pay all the taxes that are going to have to be there to support that. And so I can't stress enough the need to coordinate and plan and communicate so that these things will be ready when you need them. One of my biggest concerns right now is the airport. We've got potential there because we've got land. We know we needed to extend the runway if we want to enhance transportation into and out of people accessing Morgantown. And a lot of that has to do with the business and business development. And so where are we in that process? And I'm concerned that the process has kind of stagnated, that we need better answers, we need better planning, we need better action, more action. We need to make some very clear decisions about how we're going to proceed with that in a way that makes it very productive and meets the needs of development in our area.
Thank you. We're going to go in an entirely different direction now. We're going to talk about the future business stability within the north-central West Virginia competitive markets. The major concern of any business venture is reducing risk by attaining a degree of predictability in the area in which they choose to invest. So our first question is, what is your working knowledge of the business and occupation general revenue collections? How do you propose to address the city's $92 million-plus unfunded pension obligation and the grant-funded city employees after the grant funds run dry?
Okay, the first part of the question is, what do I know about the BNO tax? I know that the city budget, the BNO tax is $13.3 million worth of the city budget, which is roughly 30%. So obviously, BNO tax is critical to the survival, and it's also critical to the growth. The BNO tax is spent in two ways. One is operations, consistent operations for budgeting process year after year. And the other is in the escrow account, which is set aside for projects that are being developed in the area of $5 million or more. And that escrow account is for one-time projects or equipment that the city may need, because those projects that are being taxed are temporary. They come in, they develop, and they're done as far as the construction. So that, those two pieces allow the city to contribute to the operating budget.
$92 million.
Yeah. Well, before you're there, that third of the operating budget says to all of us, if we don't have healthy business in the city, we cannot grow, we cannot develop, we cannot improve, we cannot clean up, we cannot paint, we cannot bring businesses in because we don't have the ability to address it. So if we don't think about the importance of business development, we are not considering our future. And I think that's very important. The $92 million, there are two retirement plans in the city. One is police and fire, and they have oversight by a state organization that provides actuarial services and provides information to the city to encourage it to budget appropriately, to have the right amount of reserves on hand, and they monitor that. And that's helpful, because that provides you with information. As a city, what you need to do, or as any business, you need to look at your employees, you need to look at the projected retirements, you need to look at how much money you're going to need to meet those retirements. And there's a lot of data that you can mine, actuarial data that helps you plan how much you need in your retirement plan, but also how much you need to fund it. I've never worked with a system that had a 100% retirement-funded plan. It's acceptable to have 60, 70, 80% funding, because you don't take it all at once. It's meted out over time as people retire. There's no guaranteed retirement age anymore, so people can work longer, some people can work less. And of course, people die, some sooner and some live longer. So we have the way to figure out what we need as a minimum amount of funding. Then, the city needs to set aside the amount of money it takes to meet that within a prescribed period of time, so that it's safe, it's something we feel comfortable with, and so the employees and our tax-paying citizens don't have to worry about that.
Thank you. Our next question, what actions will you take to improve and preserve the ability for the businesses and firms to compete with entities outside the city? Do you support a 1% sales tax? Why or why not? And do you believe it will harm businesses in the city?
Okay, those are two different questions in one way. What would I do to preserve the businesses in the city and keep them competitive with businesses outside the city? Well, I think we need to talk to the businesses in the city and ask them what their challenges are with regard to businesses outside the city. Is it the costs of living and offering services in the city? Is it the convenience or the lack of convenience? What is it that the city offers them that people outside the city don't have? And I don't have a good handle on that, because the complaints I hear, we pay more than the people outside the city. So how can we be competitive? To the people outside the city, and I know there's a discussion now about annexation, what can the city offer to businesses on the periphery that would make them want to be a part of the city? It has to be good for both parties. Both parties should gain from becoming members of the city, paying taxes to the city. And if we can't provide that, there's no encouragement for anyone to come into the city. What is my advantage? I think if we decide what we want in the city, one of my biggest concerns is we have students that we serve, and they have a different market. We have citizens, and I live right a block from town. It's so convenient to walk into town, bring children into town, have activities in town. But in the last several years, I've seen several businesses leave, one of which kids in my family loved, which was the Dairy Queen. Just recently, the Elegant Alley Cat left. Okay, now, sometimes it's management, and sometimes it's simply too expensive to stay in town, because the prices on High Street are a little bit expensive. I don't know what they are in some of the other areas, but if you build your own building and you have other occupants, sometimes that helps. So I need to know, what is the advantage of being in the city? Because I live in the city, I have a business in the city, I started the Elegant Alley Cat years ago, I know what that means. And so my question is, does it provide me with more customers, more walk-ins, more attention? Am I promoted? Do parents come down, or is it just students and all they want are what most people in the community think? We just provide beer and food downtown? And there's really no need, except for special events, to come downtown. So we really need to look at that and find out, what is it we want downtown to be? And we don't need to reinvent the wheel. There are lots of other towns that have gone through this. The next part of the question was the 1% sales tax. Right now, I'm not convinced we need a 1% sales tax. And the reason is, I don't have enough data to know what's being done with what we do have. I don't know what planning is being done fiscally to know, are we using what we have appropriately? And another part of that is, do we have the right priorities? I mean, I've looked at the goals and objectives. I know there was strategic planning. I'm concerned that a lot of these are tasks and not long-term visionary kinds of things, because if you think about it, we're elected for two years, we want to achieve something in two years. That's a task in many cases, something I can touch. I put a sign up, I changed the parking, I changed the rules, I planted a tree. And I'm not making fun, because those are very important things that need to get done. This is all a part of what attracts people to your, to your city. But how are we going to fund more of that in the future? How are we going to address the need for more traffic control, for high technology to help us manage that, that process? So I feel there's a lack, and what I've observed, of the forward-thinking visionary, how do we keep it going and keep it growing while we're doing all the things that need to get done to make it work?
Thank you. The last thing that we have is an opportunity for you to tell us anything that we haven't discussed that you feel very passionately or very strongly about, that you would like to share with the voters.
Well, I think I've covered some of it by saying I really think we have to have some vision. We have to have more than the tasks that we need to complete. I mean, paving roads is great. Is there a way to build more roads? Is there a way to restructure traffic so it doesn't go through neighborhoods? What's our long, do we value that? Is that a long-term plan? What are we doing to grow business? Are we providing land, helping identify locations? Are we providing financial assistance, business knowledge? Is there a way that we can help grow business, make it attractive? Is there a continuity downtown to some kind of service setting and business setting? Because we need business downtown, we need food downtown, we need beer downtown, but we need retail downtown, and we need activities downtown. And all of that should fit together, and it should all be there. Now, I will say this, as we're sitting here talking about it, Suncrest Town Center is a new town. University is building their apartments around retail and food and drink establishments. So we're building towns around us, or we're letting it happen, and two things occur to me. Are we involved in that in a way that's proactive? Are we using their knowledge at all to help us focus on downtown? There's expertise involved in doing these things. We don't have it as council people. We are laypeople who are supposed to lead in forward-thinking of where we want this town to go and help the management of the city find the resources. We have lots of resources here. Sometimes we see them as competition, not as friends and neighbors and people who also will profit by a downtown that's very healthy and a city that's very healthy. So I'd like to see more involved. healthy. So I'd like to see more involvement by a greater number of business people getting their ideas, making suggestions, not in a way that's competitive, but in a way that is supportive, cooperative, and will support their business, whatever it is.
Very good. Thank you for coming in and sharing your thoughts with us, Barbara.
You're welcome.
Good luck in the election.
Thank you.
We're here with Barry Wendell from the 7th District in Morgantown. Thanks for coming in, Barry.
My pleasure.
We've got about four questions for you, but before we do that, we'd like you to give you an opportunity to talk a little bit about your background for maybe just a minute.
When they said that last night at the Women's, League of Women Voters, people took three minutes. But, so one minute. Well, I'm Barry Wendell. I'm a homeowner, an elderly homeowner in Suncrest, like a lot of my neighbors. And I was born and raised in Baltimore. I went to public schools in Baltimore County. I worked in government, state and local in Maryland, and then social security in South Florida. I worked as a substitute teacher in Los Angeles. I was also clergy. I sang for the Jewish Holidays for seven years and tutored bar mitzvah kids for nine, part of which was while I was still substituting. And we moved here seven years ago. I married to Rabbi Joe Ampel, who was a student rabbi when I met him, an old student rabbi. But he was offered a job here in Morgantown seven years ago when we moved here.
Very good. Great. That's a nice diverse background. You've been all over the country.
Yeah.
So our first question for you, Barry, traffic is a real problem in Morgantown, and most folks feel this must be addressed. Do you have any ideas how to help resolve some of the traffic issues in town? There's much talk of additional roundabouts, which many people express they do not like. Are there other considerations?
Just yesterday, it took me to get from the post office to where Mon Boulevard widens into four lanes. Took me 20 minutes.
Thank you.
So there's obviously a problem. The one roundabout that people are talking about is the one at Collins Ferry and University, which is in the 7th Ward. And I think we need to do that because I know there are business people who don't like it, but it's, it's a very dangerous intersection if you're trying to go from University, it's turn left and go north on Collins Ferry, or if you're coming south on Collins Ferry and you want to go south on University, it's dangerous. And it's very backed up at rush hour, and I think we need to do that one. I don't think there's anything we can do much in the next two years about the traffic. There's a plan for Mon Boulevard, Beachhurst. Hopefully, we can get something done there. There can be some street widening. Longer term, we need to cooperate with, maybe with Pennsylvania and with the, the county, and maybe with the Chamber of Commerce. We could do a study from MMPO about where the traffic is coming from and going to. People going to Milan or to the university or to the hospitals, where are they coming from? And maybe we could build park and ride lots like at Mount Morris and have a bus that goes in from Mount Morris on a regular basis at rush hour, or at Pierpont at the 68 exit over there, or in Saberton. That would be something. We need to drastically improve the bus system. It's not, I don't think the bus system is very good at this point. And the university guy that we talked to about being on the Traffic Commission, is the university's pick, said that the PRT was supposed to be the, the major part of the inner-city transit. And I took the PRT today, and it was delayed, and it was, I was the only one who wasn't a student that was using the PRT, and I don't know that that's viable to, to be a mass transit thing. Otherwise, there's plenty of empty lots around here. If we could figure out a way to build housing for people who work in the city, not students, there's, should be enough student housing, but for people who work here who've graduated and can't find a place to live. A lot of people tell me that. Or even like this building here, I know a couple of empty nesters who sold their big house in South Park or Woodburn or Suncrest to downsize into an apartment that has amenities and an elevator. And we should have more of that, and there's space for it. We could do that. And that might cut some of the through-traffic in town.
Good.
Long-term.
You have, I think, partially answered our second question here.
Okay.
And that is, what infrastructure improvements do you foresee as necessary to promote long-term growth?
We have empty lots, and I think that's a problem. And empty lots downtown, we need to decide what exactly we want there. And my guess would be, we would want medium-income housing, multifamily housing on those lots. And we've just rezoned the area south of here that was zoned industrial to where it can be mixed commercial and residential. There's already commercial there, but it's out of, it's out of zoning. It's supposed to be industrial. But we could add to that apartment buildings and, you know, multiple-use buildings, buildings with stores on the bottom and apartments above that. And it would be convenient to downtown and be easy to get around to. So I think, my feeling is that we need is, what we need is housing. There are empty stores on High Street that we need to fill. I'd like to do something with the movie theater. That's been vacant since before I moved here, and that's disgraceful. I, I travel a lot. I visit a lot of cities within 300 miles of here. I have a whole project. I've visited 81 different counties since we moved here. A lot of them have a movie theater downtown that's run by the city, or run by the city with nonprofits, or in one case, a family rebuilt the movie theater, and it's, it's working. And I don't, I don't see why we can't do that. I've asked about it, you know, can we take over the building? Can we condemn it? And all I get is, it's privately owned, we can't really do anything about it. But I think we have to look at what we could do.
Okay.
Thank you for your responses. We're going to go in a different direction now. Future business stability within the North Central West Virginia competitive markets. The major concern of any business venture is reducing risk by attaining a degree of predictability in the area in which they choose to invest. So our next question is, what is your working knowledge of the business and occupation general revenue collections? How do you propose to address the city's $92 million-plus unfunded pension obligation and the grant-funded city employees after the grant funds run dry?
Okay. I don't know a lot about the BNO tax. I know that people would like to reduce that. To reduce that, we'd have, we could get, put on a one-cent sales tax and reduce the BNO tax, but we are short of revenue. And I wouldn't want to reduce the BNO tax by very much. And I don't really, last night, there was a League of Voters, League of Women Voters forum with Mountaineers for Progress. And most of the candidates, there were like 11 of us there, 11 or 12, said that they were in favor of raising the sales tax by one cent. And that would, because of the way the home rule is set up, we would have to reduce the BNO tax somewhat. But there's a limited amount that we would do that because we're looking for more revenue, and we don't want to cut it too much. Stability, I think things are pretty stable as far as the tax rates go for business. I lost my track. What would, can you repeat some of that?
Yes. Yes. What is your working knowledge of the business and occupation general revenue collections? How do you propose to address the city's $92 million-plus unfunded pension obligation?
Well, yeah. Of course, the pension thing has been going on for a long time, a long time. And we've been trying to, to work on that. I don't, I'm not really in favor of taking away anyone's benefits. I have a pension from Los Angeles School District. It's not a big pension, but I worked as a substitute for eighteen and a half years. And I put into that, and they pay my health care. And now there's a billionaire who got elected head of the school district who says, well, we're spending too much money on retirees. And I, I stayed with that job as long as I did because they promised me that I would have lifetime health care, and I would hate to see them renege on that, which is what's happened with a lot of the coal companies in West Virginia where they've taken away benefits from people, which is, to me, it's unconscionable. So I hope that we could find a way to pay that. The thing with the, the grant money, we hired 15 firefighters with the grant in 2017. And I was very much in favor of that because Chief Garavasos came to us and said, we have the same number of firefighters we had in 1973. And I was, I'm like, what? That's impossible. That city has grown a lot. We have to do more. So we took this grant, the Safer Grant, which will run out, and we will be stuck with pension things and things to do. And we will just have to do that. If we have to raise the fire fees, then we'll do it. But we need to have the fire coverage. We just need to have that. So I think there's a difference. We, as a council, one of the things we said was that we want it to be a really great city and have good amenities. And that's the difference between us and the county. The county wants to keep taxes low, fine. The county taxes are low, but they don't fund the bus system or the library or the parks, at least not as much as they should. If you live in the county, you have to call a volunteer fire department, and they may or may not show up. We have a professional fire department, professional police. They show up, boom, instantly. My neighbor had a flood in her house. She came banging on my door, help, help, help. Water remained broken. There were waters all over the place in the house. I called the fire department. They were there in two minutes, the city fire department. So, I mean, we have those amenities, and we need to keep them up, and we have to pay for it.
Thank you. We wanted to give you an opportunity to talk about anything that we have not discussed yet that you feel passionately for or strongly about that you would like to share with the voters.
Well, that's very interesting. Yes. We, as a city, have been very, we're trying to be a greener, more open city, embrace diversity. There's now, we're working on new trails down to the rail trail, working on bike paths. We did try to buy the Haymaker Forest, which didn't happen. There's now a PFLAG chapter in town, which is Parents and Friends of Lesbians and Gays. They had 50 people at an event this week at their, at their brethren church. So that's happening. And I'm just wondering, is the Chamber of Commerce being supportive of a greener city, supportive of diversity, of gay inclusion? And what, I'm just wondering what, where you stand on that? Because I haven't seen that from the chamber.
Very good. That's a good question. I think we can address that in the future, maybe not at this exact moment, but...
Okay. I do know that the, the chamber asked the, there was a religious freedom thing that said that people could discriminate against LGBT people because of their religion, and the Morgantown Chamber came out against it.
Yeah.
Although the West Virginia Chamber was in favor of it.
All right. Yeah. Well, good. That kind of shows where a local chapter stands.
Yeah.
Well, good. We appreciate you coming in. Thank you for sharing your thoughts with us today.
Thank you. Glad I could come.
We're here with Ron Delaney from the 5th Ward in Morgantown. Thanks for coming, Ron.
Thanks for having me.
Good. We've got a few questions for you. But before we ask those questions, we'd like to give you about one minute just to talk about your background.
Sure. I'm Ron Delaney. I live in Woodburn. And first came to Morgantown in 2006, where I met my now-wife, where she was a PhD student at WVU. Moved here in 2008. I am an assistant professor of design and community development at West Virginia University. I'm an architect by training and profession. I practiced for a number of years in Atlanta, Charleston, South Carolina, Roanoke, Virginia, Tampa, Florida, and maintain a small consulting business here in Morgantown in addition to my teaching. I'm running for council because as, two years ago, we weren't sure who was going to step forward in our ward when Marty Shamberger decided not to run again. And my wife said, you know, as an architect, it seems like the city could use your experience and expertise. And, and gave it some thought and, and decided to jump in for that reason.
Good. Very good reason, too. So our first question is, traffic. It's a real problem in Morgantown, and most folks feel that this must be addressed by any candidate. Do you have any ideas how to help resolve some of the traffic issues in town? And there's much talk of additional roundabouts, which some people express that they do not like. Are there any other solutions?
Well, I think one of the real challenges that we have in Morgantown and really all cities in West Virginia is that our primary arteries in and out of the city and through the city are state-managed roads. And I have heard some talk lately about, wouldn't it be great if maybe the municipalities or the counties could act as a, as a consultant or subcontractor and, and take on some of the projects that has been backlogged with the state? And I think that's certainly an idea that's worth exploring. My understanding is that it's not so much a matter of money at the state level as it is manpower and, and really ability to get the work done. So I think with the management of our paving program over the last several years, we have established a track record of being able to manage and perform these types of projects. I think if we did that, then we may also have more opportunity to explore the implementation of new technologies. Pittsburgh is implementing a smart traffic signal system where they have dramatically reduced stops at lights, congestion, and idling time in their city. I think the, it's reduced commutes or travel time by 25% on most travels. And that's technology that was developed with Carnegie Mellon's right up the road. My understanding is they have implemented that in about 160 intersections. So things that we can do to improve the roadways, to move traffic through quicker, I think are important. I think we also need to do some other things. I think we need to support our bus system and mass communication. I think we need to provide a good infrastructure for alternative modes of transportation, bicycling, walking that are safe and interconnected across the city. I think we need to try to provide opportunities for people to live closer to where they work. And I think that's especially true when you look at the downtown business district, and even perhaps future development out at the airport when the Commerce Park opens up up there.
Very good. Yeah. You've already addressed question number two, but I'll, I'll read it anyway.
Okay.
Maybe you can elaborate. What infrastructure improvements do you foresee as necessary to promote long-term growth?
Well, obviously, we've got to work on our transportation. But beyond transportation, in terms of roadways and alternate modes of transportation, I think the airport is really critical. There's been a lot of conversation lately about the passenger air service there. We need to, as a city, do all that we can to work with our carrier and increase the use of that airport. But I think even more important than passenger service is the runway extension, because the runway extension will do a couple of things for us. One is it will allow more corporate air traffic, which is important when you're trying to attract larger businesses and corporations, and charter flights. So rather than have Big 12 teams fly into Pittsburgh and come down, they'll fly directly into Morgantown, perhaps, and spend more money in Morgantown, and that's important. In addition to that, the runway project is actually a real key milestone in being able to develop the Commerce Park that we have out there. That is, we've got a tremendous amount of land out there in city limits that can be developed. But that is waiting on the airport extension because the fill for the airport is going to be taken from the site where the, where the Commerce Park is. So there's a lot, I think, a lot of potential out at the airport at several different levels. And so I think that's really an important place to place our attention.
Thank you. We're going to move to the future business stability within the North Central West Virginia competitive markets. The major concern of any business venture is reducing risk by attaining a degree of predictability in the area in which they choose to invest. So our next question is, what is your working knowledge of the business and occupation general revenue collections? How do you propose to address the $92 million-plus unfunded pension obligation and the grant-funded city employees after the grant funds run dry?
Whoa. Okay. So there's a lot there. Well, so what do I know about the business and occupation tax? I think the first thing to know is that it's a real challenge, that it is the single, it's the single greatest source of revenue for municipalities in West Virginia. And I think until the state legislature changes that, unfortunately, it's a system that we're, we're not going to get out of. And so to put that in perspective, our tax revenues in 2018 were in the range of $24 million. Our property taxes were in the range of $4 million in terms of what we collected. And our regular BNO taxes were about $13 million. So over half of our... So over half of our overall tax revenue was BNO tax collection. In addition to that, we also collected about $3 million in construction BNO taxes. So I think as a city, again, until something happens at the legislature, there's not, I don't think we're in a position where we can eliminate that. And I think what we have to do is to try to decrease disincentives, because certainly, I've heard that that can be a disincentive for businesses to stay in the city or locate in the city. This council has done a couple of things to move us in that direction. I think there was a BNO tax credit ordinance that was passed that reduced the BNO tax initially for businesses, new businesses in the city and businesses that would come into the city. And there was also a construction BNO tax credit for projects over $5 million. Council did pass that. I didn't vote for that, and I'll come back to why in just a second. But my understanding is that that was a significant factor in the development, the new development on High Street right now, which is about a $7 million new building project. So I think that, I think that that is a step in the right direction. Now, why did I not vote yes for that? It's not that I'm against the tax credit, but I, there was nothing in that ordinance to support existing businesses. And I felt like if we were going to reduce those disincentives for outside businesses, that we ought to try to do something to help support the businesses who have been here with us and been loyal to the city and, you know, do all that we can to support them. Now, there are different ways that we could do that. And I looked at what Wheeling has done and Martinsburg and Fairmont. Martinsburg, for example, gives a 10% BNO tax reduction to all businesses in their business district, regardless of whether you're new or existing. Fairmont, I think, has an interesting approach, because they have a scalable tax credit for existing businesses that's tied to job creation, scope of preservation projects in the downtown, how much preservation is there, and then one or two other items. So I think that idea of actually tying the tax credit to some goal that we have as a community, and especially like the idea of job creation, I think that we should, we should consider something like that. So I think that the tax credit ordinance that we passed is helping, and I would like to see us extend that kind of thing for existing businesses as well. I'm not sure I answered the entire question.
Yeah, it was a multi-pronged question.
Yeah, so...
The second half of the question?
Yes, please.
How do you propose to address the city's $92 million, $92 million unfunded pension obligation and the grant-funded city employees after the grant funds run dry?
Okay. Yeah, so we have, I guess, lately been putting about, allocating about $1.9 million in our budget to go towards those pensions. We have, I think, moved in a good direction in that for 2019, we have increased that by $100,000. And it's modest, certainly in comparison to the overall debt, but I think it's a step in the right direction. This is an issue that we're not going to resolve over the short term. It's something that we're going to have to chip away at over the long term. And I'd like to see us continue to, ideally every year, try to increase what we're able to contribute to reduce those pensions. The maintaining the SAFER, the firefighters that we hired with the SAFER grant. What's been proposed at this point is, in addition to the user fee, and this is complicated for me, because I would like to see us actually be able to be in a position that someday we could eliminate the user fees altogether. So to add to the existing user fee, I have some concerns about. And my real concern with the existing user fee is that it is not very fair, that you may have someone working in a minimum wage job and they're paying the same weekly fee as President Guy or the football coach at WVU. Right now, I think it would be very hard to eliminate that, because salaries for our police department are dependent on that. And so we've got to find a way to move those salaries over into the general budget so that, so that that fee isn't required in order to provide basic services. So I think that this gets tied up into the next question, which is the 1% sales tax. And I think the reason for that is that I think if a 1% sales tax is implemented, I would like, and I don't want to get too far ahead, I'll come back and talk more directly about that, but I think it's all tied together, because we're looking at forms of revenue and increasing revenue. And I think we've got to look at those issues holistically, and we've got to look at those relative to the existing tax structures that we have and existing fee structure. And so I think, obviously, to be able to move, you know, to maintain in the municipal fee those kind of short-term costs, like roadways and ride-a-ways and things like that, ideally, at some point, when we get on top of that, I'd like to look at reducing and perhaps finally eliminating that. Right now, it's not going to happen, because we've got personnel in there. So the 1%, you know, I think, again, I'm not sure how we're going to do that. I'm committed to doing it one way or the other. I think we've got, that we made a commitment. I made a commitment, a personal commitment with my vote, that we were going to take care of that, and we will take care of that.
Thanks. What actions will you take to improve and preserve the ability for the businesses and firms to compete with entities outside the city? Do you support a 1% sales tax? Why or why not? Do you believe it will harm businesses in the city? Please be specific.
Okay. So I think that the first thing is, again, we're not going to eliminate the BNO tax, which is a disincentive and perhaps a competitive disadvantage. But I do think that we should continue to look for ways to reduce the impact of that, to try to support new businesses especially, but also existing businesses. The 1% sales tax, I am open to. I think in terms of, I think conceptually, I support it, I would say. I think that it should be designated for particular purposes. And I think, you know, what those are, I think there's a lot of some needs. And I suspect that the hard part's going to be figuring out exactly how to designate that. I am not just for passing a 1% sales tax and letting it go into the general fund. I think Boat Park has certainly been mentioned as a potential recipient of about half of that. I think that that is a, I think that that is worth considering, giving serious consideration to. I mean, Boat Park is part of our amenities here in town, and that's part of business development and attracting businesses and employees, or the kinds of amenities that you have. So I think to the extent that that money will, there's a payoff for that investment, I think that that makes good sense. I think beyond that, I would be interested in seeing if we can offset some of the municipal fee. Can we absorb the fire fee, for example? Again, I'm reluctant to put personnel costs into, you know, into a fee, right? So if we implement the $1, if we increase the municipal fee by $1, we're going to be doing that to pay more personnel. And so I would be interested in, if we implement the 1% sales tax, perhaps there's some portion that goes into the general fund for salaries for police and firefighters, again, so that we can position that municipal fee, so that one day, maybe, we can reduce it. I talked, I was very interested in the 1% fee when I was first elected. I talked to Tom Bloom, tried to reach out to all the commissioners, and I had a conversation with them. I know that he, at that time, was interested in perhaps a countywide 1% fee. I think that that would be, a 1% sales tax, I think that that would be ideal, because, again, with the BNO tax and then the 1% sales tax, my, what I, a little bit of research I've done suggests that it's not going to make major, that consumers aren't going to make major decisions based on that. But at the same time, it's perceived, it's a perceived disadvantage. It's perceived, you know, and it is a slightly additional cost. So I think that, you know, I also, once I became aware that we're looking at about $5 million with a 1% sales tax versus $13 million with the BNO general tax, obviously, it's not, one's not going to offset the other. So I think, you know, obviously, we need to reduce a portion of the BNO taxes. We will do that. We've identified potentially retail and manufacturing as some areas for that. Retail, because it will help offset perhaps some of the, some of the costs to the, to the business owners. So I think it's certainly something that's worth considering. We have, we have a lot of costs that we need to take care of. We're trying to figure out how to generate more revenue. I think over the long term, what we need to do is focus on economic development, because more businesses, more people will result in more revenue for the city and will stretch our ability to provide the kinds of services that I think most of us want in Morgantown. But over the short term, I think that the sales tax is one of the few tools that we may have to begin to move in that direction.
Thank you. We appreciate those responses.
Thank you.
We wanted to give you an opportunity to talk about anything that we have not discussed that you feel passionately for or strongly about that you would like to share with the voters.
Okay. Well, I ran two years ago on several issues. I ran on downtown redevelopment, preservation and redevelopment of our traditional neighborhoods, complete streets, basically working on those multimodal transportation routes through town, and affordable housing. And I know that the chamber has an interest in affordable housing, because I've been working in a group with Eldon Callan, a regional group with the Marion Chamber and Morgantown Chamber and WVU and others. I would say that really, over my first two years, the place where I had probably invested the most and feel, feel the most passionate about actually is our downtown, downtown Morgantown. And it's not in my ward, but I believe that a strong core is important to the health of the entire city and the entire metropolitan area. Have worked very hard, been involved with Main Street Morgantown. We, as a city council, approved a facade improvement program, and I served on the committee, the review and selection committee for that with Main Street. I have worked with small business owners, especially on Walnut Street. There've been some concerns, you know, there, we are trying to serve a diverse community downtown. We have social service agencies. We have small businesses. There is a perception issue downtown. And then there was also, I think, some genuine concern. And so I think where those worlds bump up against each other, sometimes there's a friction. And so I have facilitated meetings with Main Street Morgantown between those groups, gotten the police chief in, and we're trying to work through and try to make downtown a place where especially young businesses can be successful, and it becomes a destination. I think that, I think that that's really important for our city. And I'm not much one for awards, but I think a lot of times I've learned in council that progress is very slow sometimes. It is about building relationships and forming relationships. And sometimes I go, "Well, what do I have to show for this?" And I think we're making progress. But I was also actually quite honored when Main Street Morgantown awarded me the 2018 Outstanding Elected Official for the work that I've done with them in downtown. So I'm very proud of that, and I think it somewhat reflects the investment that I've made there.
Very good. We appreciate you coming in to talk with us on your opinions.
Well, thank you very much for having me. I really appreciate it.
Thanks. We're here with Jenny Saline from the 4th Ward in Morgantown. Thanks for coming in, Jenny.
Thanks for having me.
We've got a few questions for you, but before we get into those, we'd like to give you an opportunity to speak about a minute or two on your background and your biography.
Okay. So I'm the child of small business owners. My, my parents published a magazine about Wisconsin. So that's where I'm from, which you're familiar, you're familiar with, because that's where you're from.
I am, too. That's good.
And so I have lived here for 26 years. My children all graduated from Morgantown High, and now I have a grandchild. I have a background in education and recreation as an undergrad. And then I have a law degree. And my law license is from Arkansas, which is where I obtained my law degree. And since I've been here, I've worked for a nonprofit. I've worked victim and witness assistance at the county courthouse, and I've worked with the community design team at WVU. So I've covered, I've kind of covered the gamut while I've been in West Virginia.
And this is not your first time. You have been on city council previously.
I have been on city council previously.
Yeah, so there is some...
This is my seventh election.
Oh, excellent. Very good. Well, thank you. So our first question, from the chamber members that thought the important items that we should ask all of the candidates deal with pretty familiar subjects. First one is traffic. It's a real problem in Morgantown, and most folks feel it must be addressed by any candidate. Do you have any ideas how to help resolve some of the traffic issues in town? Is there much talk of additional roundabouts, which many people express they do not like? Are there other solutions? So have at it.
So first of all, that is an area that I concentrate on, is transportation. So I'm part of the Chamber of Commerce's Transportation Committee. I'm currently chair of the MMPO, that's our Regional Transportation Planning Group. So I am well-versed and wish that I had all the answers, but I think that one thing that we've done over time is push very hard to pull as one unit from our area to try to work with Charleston, because the Division of Highways governs most of our main roads, and just keep pushing for road improvements, for new roads, for paving the potholes on the existing routes. And as a city, we've worked very hard with our SAFE Community Fee to pave, pave our roads, which is what the city governs, which I think we're kind of trying to set a good example for the state, so that people can see that instead of the city's paving schedule being on a 30-year schedule, having it be on a 10-year schedule or a 12-year schedule. So it's very important that we take care of our roads, but it's also very important that we work with the state on their roads. As far as roundabouts, I know that people don't like them. Some people, though, do, some people do like them. And yeah, in fact, I like them.
Yeah.
I think that if we, as we have more roundabouts in the area, that people will get better at driving them. And I think that sometimes when the Division of Highways brings us a plan that includes a roundabout, it's very hard to change that plan, and that if we fight those plans too hard, that we end up with zero road improvements and our road money going elsewhere. So I guess I'm an advocate for roundabouts. Sometimes they're not appropriate, and in those situations, I think we have to try to work with the road designers and come up with alternative solutions.
Yeah, good, good. And the second question is similar to that, in that what infrastructure improvements do you foresee as necessary to promote long-term growth?
So long-term growth, we're working on a I-79, another access point north of town, which I think is very important to me. I live near the Patterson Corridor, and I'd like to see through that whole 705 corridor, having another access point that heads off to 79 at a northern location. I think that we need to address, so roads. I think we need to continue to work on the new reservoir, so that we have appropriate water resources into the future. Pretty much all of the infrastructure, you know, having appropriate internet access, everything that a business would want or a person would want for their home, but particularly for businesses, I think we need the heavy, the heavy-duty, the well-designed roads, the ability to get around town at all different hours of the day. So I am in favor of those improvements, and I'm currently working on them.
Thank you. The next thing we're going to talk about is the future business stability within the north-central West Virginia competitive markets. The major concern of any business venture is reducing risk by attaining a degree of predictability in the area in which they choose to invest. So the next question, what is your working knowledge of business and occupation general revenue collections? How do you propose to address the city's $92 million-plus unfunded pension obligation and the grant-funded city employees after the grant funds run dry?
I'm glad you asked that. And it's also interesting, because you know, the, the population of the city as a percentage of the county is going down through time, and we've noticed. So we're the central most populated area, and we're very constricted with our boundaries. So part of the answer to this is some annexation, to the point where the populated area is part of Morgantown city limits, so that our population isn't so constrained, and so that people who are functionally part of the city are actually part of the city. So that's sort of one of the answers to that low percentage, as far as the population of the county goes. As far as the 1% sales tax, and the reason for the 1% sales tax... As far as the 1% sales tax, and the reason for the 1% sales tax is those pensions. So we've watched as pretty much every other main, major community in the state has, through Home Rule, put in a 1% sales tax, and they've gone pretty much toward pensions and toward capital, major capital improvements, sometimes recreational improvements. And so that is the current idea, the current plan that's being talked about in City Hall includes a major portion of the funding to go toward pensions and, and the other major portion to go towards parks and recreation, because we have let our park system, capital improvement portion has been let go for a number of years. And part of it is just what we were talking about earlier, where we've had, our population hasn't necessarily declined, but it's declined as a proportion of the county. And so we have more and more people in the county that are all using some of these services, they're using county parks, but they're also throughout the entire county, including the city of Morgantown, which is in the county. The whole area have a large demand for recreation resources. That's something that some of the major companies have told us they'd like to see, their employees have asked for quality parks and recreation facilities and services. And so with this 1% sales tax, it's not the cure to everything, but it's a cure to some of the things that have just been languishing and need to be taken care of.
Okay, thank you. The next question, you've touched on a little bit already. What actions will you take to improve and preserve the ability for the businesses and firms to compete with entities outside the city? Do you support a 1% sales tax? Why or why not? And do you believe it will harm businesses in the city?
So I guess I'll start the harm, the harm to businesses. So because sales tax is something that is added on as, as the item is being purchased or as someone is paying for the item, it's not something that's added directly to the business, it's direct, it's added to the consumer. And we have asked, the advantage of being one of the last adopters of a sales tax is that we've been able to call and actually ask. For instance, we were concerned about people who were paying for larger ticket items like jewelry. I know cars are larger than jewelry, but, but we were concerned about a jewelry store in our downtown, and so we were calling Huntington to ask, and Mayor Bill Kueke happened to be the one that called, but we had researched who would be the best. We had talked to the mayor in Huntington and asked, you know, how, what has the experience been? And the people who are operating the businesses, the business owners and the managers, were super happy at the improvements. So they were happy that they were taking care of parks and recreation, that the city wasn't on the brink of having financial difficulty. They wanted to contribute to their community, and they didn't feel like it hurt their businesses at all. Now, that could, it could be that here that someone else will experience something different, but we have a thriving, going community with plenty of customers and plenty of business going on, and a 1% sales tax that isn't onerous because it's collected by the, for collection purposes, it is an onerous, because it's, it's collected by the state. And it seems to be one of the few methods, cities are very limited on the methods for collecting taxes. And so that's why we have this Safe Communities Fee for police and roads, and then this would be a fee for Bow Park and for our unfunded liabilities, which have grown. It used to be that we were in the best shape of anyone in the state, and now other communities have taken action and we have not yet taken action, so it's time.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you for all your responses. And now we want to give you an opportunity to talk about anything that you want to that we haven't discussed, that you feel passionately for or strongly about, that you would like to share with the voters.
So the thing that I most would like to share with the voters is talking a little bit about Bow Park, which I've, I've touched on. And it's, it's just interesting because people consider recreation to be kind of an amenity or something that if, if you have a budget shortfall, it should be the first thing to go. And I don't look at it that way at all, in part because I've had some education and have worked for different parks districts, but I've noticed that in communities that have a thriving park district and thriving recreational amenities, that people want to come and work there, they want to come and live there. They realize maybe they can't get into the university facilities, which is often the case, and so they're looking for what the city has to provide. Especially some recent graduates will say, well, I can't go here anymore, I can't go there anymore, you know, "City, what do you have?" And it can be something as simple as, you know, a kickball league. We've had requests for kickball leagues. But it also can be some major facilities, like working on our ice rink. And we're right in the, right at the, I've been on the Parks Board for four years, and we have changed over some of our board members. Nothing, the previous board members were doing an excellent job, but now we have the full spectrum. We have someone who's been on Bow Park from the beginning of Bow Park, and then people who have young families. So it's, it's nice to have that broad, broad look at, at how we can. So we're working at having a foundation for Bow Park to try to raise funds. We're working on this sales tax as, as part of a multitude of income streams. We're working on more grants. We're working on using the money that we have as wisely as possible. So we've used, you know, Bow Park funds to bring in, there's going to be a new pirate ship. The, it's going to be a little water feature for small children at Creps Park to replace the water, the little water slide and squirty feature that used to be there. So this has a water and ocean component and, and lots of, lots of fun to be had. So we've worked really hard and considered it almost an emergency when something isn't going well with one of the pools or something isn't going well with the ice rink, that we try to repair right away. We try to see what we can do to make permanent, more long-term fixes, bring in new items. So we're, we're working really hard, and then we're hoping to have that effort matched with some new sources of income so that we can really get back on track. Because Bow Park has always been a quality organization even when underfunded, and if it were better funded, I think we would see, see something really special, so.
Very good. Thanks for sharing your comments with us and coming in.
Thank you. Appreciate the chamber doing this.